What are we gonna see from the roads?
Well, so.
Because again, the board was pretty, pretty strong.
Was already brought up. No, what was discussed in my, in my recollection was. Um, we have a fence that is in this location. This is a screen fence. And then what we agreed to. Um, was that any storage that would occur in this area would have a secondary screening fence. And it may not necessarily be the size that's shown here. If it's a smaller storage area, that, that screening fence. Would be movable and it would screen any product that's outside such that. As you pass by the site on Maple Street and you look into the site, you won't see any outdoor storage.
So what's the maximum of your outdoor storage?
So that's on, that's listed on the plan. So maximum is. Uh, sixteen thousand seven hundred and fifty square.
How tall, how tall?
Oh, I thought you said the area. It's, it's not defined. I mean, so.
Okay, so scenic road, um, you know, the piece of it here. How high is your fence? That's gonna be there?
We, we can.
Yeah, that, that's something that. That's something that we talked about this afternoon that we were happy to, because we're not expecting this, you know, the, this set of plans to be the.
Yeah, so.
Set of plans, so we're gonna add a fence and a detail.
So my concern is I don't want to see piles of anything from the road. I don't want to see pallets. I think there should be a restriction if you're gonna put pallets on two pallets. You know, if you get a six foot fence, I don't want to see the top of the pallet. So that's that one pallet. That's, it's concerning with, I don't know if that's practical or not. So the outdoor storage pieces, that, that's very concerning.
Bill, what I'd like to do, I tell you directly, is just pretty conditioned.
Board is talking, these two members have talked about no outdoor storage.
No, no, I don't want to see outdoor storage from it.
Okay, we're perfectly.
So.
Moving to work with you.
Height of a fence, the height of a pallet should be conditioned.
Okay.
Can't, I can't see having too high of a fence either, so.
Yeah, so as Mike alluded to in the beginning, he has those seven or eight comments to add some details to the plan. We'll also show the fence around the outdoor storage area and a lot of detail for the detail sheet that showed behind of the fence. And we'll graphically show a two pallet stack, so you can see that it's sufficient.
Okay, I got a pallet in my head right now and I.
We'll agree on a height, but this simple, we'll agree on a height. That everybody can live with, and we want to discuss that now. What I need to do is come back and then it's not good. Let's, let's, why don't we just discuss it now?
That's our idea, and I see where this could go down the road. Dependent on, on a tenant. You know, a tenant may have something that, um, is five feet high.
Right.
Another tenant's thirty thousand square feet is ten feet high. One tenant goes out, one tenant comes in. I don't want you, um, constantly changing the fence. I would like to agree with, again, you're probably coming back if the plans are changing. I, I condition, as I outlined earlier. And Rob can help me out with the proper language, that any outdoor storage. Cannot be seen from, uh, Maple Street. Or the, what's, um.
Or the neighbors.
Or the neighbors. What, how close did you neighbors?
The commercial neighbor to the north is much lower. There's a significant grade drop and there's a solid six foot fence on top of that grade drop.
That's what we call.
They will never see it.
Okay.
It's really an, an issue from the, the main entry as you pass by the site and you glance into the site. That's where you'll get a view of it.
Alright, so next time we can talk about that. Now I guess the, the third question I have, I don't know if it's. So I'm gonna ask this, and I don't know if you know the answer. I hate asking questions we don't have the answer to, but. Have we had town council weigh in on our new bylaw and this application? Are we still waiting for input from town council on any changes that's like, is that, or anything, something grandfathered, whether it's. Did we have, have legal weigh in on that yet?
I did, yes. So town council did weigh in. Since these special permits are active right now, they're, I want to say they're grandfathered, but they're active with the zoning that was in place previous. The issue becomes with the building permit. So in order to essentially freeze zoning, you would have to submit either an A and R or. Preliminary subdivision submission in order to freeze the zoning, and that would have had to have been done. Prior to that May first special meeting and.
We submitted a preliminary subdivision on the twenty-four, twenty-six.
It was twenty-sixth and stamped in on the twenty-ninth. So that is coming in front of this board. Uh, next meeting, May twenty-third.
So they made the deadline for the A and R before the town voted?
Yes, correct. Yeah.
We opted for a preliminary subdivision versus the A and R because the latter affords you a longer freeze. Uh, that's the difference between the two.
And that is a legal remedy.
It's a legal.
Yes.
Remedy from the mass, through mass general law. And just to, it, just to sort of close the loop here, we have to follow up that preliminary with a definitive within seven months.
Correct.
Correct. So that's, that's.
And we'll get to that in the twenty-third.
The first step is, has been made.
Okay. Thank you for asking.
Yeah, no, I just thought we ought to get that on the table right away. Alright, so they're still waiting for some details. Late for the details from peer review and. That's my question for tonight.
Do you want, before you open?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I just respectfully, we have some very specific comments remaining in peer review.
Yep.
But it, would it make sense to discuss your wishes with the fence so that. We, we can sort of bring this to closure next time and we, we can have it all in the final set of plans versus.
I think I gave you an expression exactly where I was.
Yeah, and I think that you haven't suggested a condition of approval that states whatever we're storing, if it's three feet high, the fence has to be four.
And I, I certainly understand.
High has to be eight, so. I don't think we want to, yeah.
I don't want to put a height restriction on it. My goal is for the neighbors, people driving down that street not to see it. Your job will be.
Making sure it's fine.
Well, twofold, making sure it happens, but in dealing with your tenants. To make sure your approach tenants are not gonna have things, you know, twelve feet high.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that we were all on the same page.
And I think it'd be fair to come in with, you know, other tenant, other applicants in the past have said, this is the language we're gonna give to our tenants. As just an example of what we're gonna be showing. So, you know, we're certainly. You know, the overall is that we don't want to see it, but. Um, you come in with a plan that says this is what we plan on doing for a height, this is what the pallet height is gonna be. Don't exceed that. To me, that goes into the condition and that's a, I don't want to make it a one-way condition, but. You know, if you come up with something that is crystal clear, or not crystal clear, then it's fuzzy later.
Exactly. That's kind of why I wanted to circle back here, but I think we're all on the same page.
However, just bear in mind, you've only heard from the board. You wait, we may hear from the public that could change some of these features.
And like, I, you know, eventually I'd like to hear if there's any of, any of the people they met with, the residents next door that actually met with them.
Absolutely.
After their discussion.
Any, anyone else in the board, a link up to the public? I know, gentlemen in the back, please state your name, and meanwhile, I'll get to you in a second.
Good evening. Steven Kohler, I'm one of the director, one of the two direct brothers. Um, four quick comments, I'll do them in reverse priority. Uh, the first one is Andrew Satchard called me today. And send me a link to the fence and, and a report, where he, he has reached out to me. And I believe he has the sterns, but Mr. Sterns will answer to that. Um, the definitive plan in seven months, it's my understanding that if it's done within the seven months, it extends to three years. An additional four, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that is correct.
Um, I want to just add a comment on the queuing. Sure. You're already getting queuing from Amazon.
I understand.
Significant.
Yeah.
So. They have queuing to deal with before they even arrive.
Alright.
Most important is the sound. Uh, I just, Brian, thank you. Your persistence on this, much appreciated. Um, keep in mind, we work remote these days. Not I, but my wife is a writer, she's home all day. It's a sterns, we retired, she's home all day. Nine P M at evenings is too late. At least at six, um, and the weekends, and relative to controlling, there needs to be something definitive. Um, good faith efforts. Don't have enough, enough strength in them. A truck shows up early in the winter on Saturday. After hours and he camps there for the rest of the weekend with the engine handling, around the clock. So, sound has been my, uh, most important focus through all of this. Uh, my preference would be not to see anything, but there's a reality to that that I accept, but I don't believe I need to hear it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, and so what I like to do, um, in weather conditions, and it's pretty standard. Um. All your vehicles, regardless of, uh, your season, that word here, there's no idling.
Yeah, I was just about to say that. We, we would, we have that in the sound study and we would also post on the building next to each dock door, no idling. Um, science.
And then I, I know you can force this, but for, uh, other warehouses. Um. How many trucks will be coming to your warehouse that are somewhat consistent?
Don't know, without a tenant, yeah.
As you outlined, concerns for the tenants. Um, we can't require it, but if they could look into the viability. Of using, um, backup swishes opposed to beepers.
Yeah, so we just permitted a project in, in Devens, right, and that same discussion came up. Um. And what we agreed to there is if our tenant owns the truck, then that's easier to enforce than. You know, one of the big companies, you know, Prime or whoever you see on the highway, you know, that has fifty thousand trucks across the country, it's kind of hard to ask them, hey. Change them off because they never know which ones, so, so to the extent we can, we'll ask, but you know, that's not easily in.
We, we would, uh, probably articulate in our, when we get to a decision, that you have a discussion. Um, with your tenants. Then if it's permanent, we'll be looking at the viability of having dual backup alarms. Because I believe you can never get rid of the beeping sound with the short sound in neighborhoods from your preference. Anyone else in the public? Let me start over here.
That's all we can go.
No, it's alright, sir.
Uh, John Martin, three thirty-four Maple Street. I know I'm not in a butter, but I only live about two hundred yards from the building. And it would be nice to have been, um, notified to have a meeting with this, because I may have had some pretty good ideas for him as I've been through this. For several years now, planning board, living on Maple Street, Victory, and we've worked through some mitigation, it seems to work. But I, I asked you a couple of questions through the chair, to the applicant. You, you say you don't know the tenant. Why then do you need bulk storage if you don't need the tenant?
Through the chair, we just want to provide that opportunity for a tenant, if they came along. Um, you know, hypothetically, they could be, I don't know, sheet metal fabricated, right, and they wanted to store some sheet metal outside. In a fenced area and then bring it in to fabricate. I don't know, could be a, a pipe, could be any, anything associated with one of our tenants, it's. Just it helps the ability to lease the space. Do we have any idea of that yet? No.
No. In, in this town, there has been a, a great, uh, we, we've worked really hard to eliminate bulk storage. And, and I appreciate Mr. Devine's concern. Maple Street is a scenic road. Um, the challenge we have, pardon me, used, used to be, whatever, they are, technically it's a scenic road. Um, the challenge we've had with other, um, buildings on site is we, we put conditions, right? There are no teeth in those conditions. And I have asked several times over the year. And the former, Mr. Cupper was here, let, put some teeth, so there's a violation. And I'll give you a perfect example. Victory was right across the street. They said, though we know twenty-four by seven operation, and they agreed to it. However, as we've, has been known by the board, Mr. Saltbury, you cannot control folks delivering. In the middle of the night. They might be coming across the country, they might be there. I have a picture. Or tractor trailer at four thirteen A M on Wednesday morning. The reason why I was out there is to take my wife to the hospital for surgery, so I went out to take the dog. And low behold, is the tractor trailer, and guess where they go? They pulled in, they took her right into Victory. This happens constantly. We have tremendous amount of tractor trailer traffic. They, sound studies. They're worthless. They're point timing. They can't, they can't possibly predict. Three, four, five years down the road. Example, Amazon, oh, we're only gonna have so many trips a day. Mr. Kohler nicely said, I've got pictures, the amount of queuing that goes on. Alright, to get into the Amazon facility as they bring vehicles from Milford, because they're overloading and bringing me to Bellingham. And you have, we have queued just this week of about thirty white vans down Maple Street trying to get into. That area. So now you're gonna add another warehouse and another. And I think the board heard loud and clear, even though we're getting through a legal legality here, this board heard loud and clear. Bellingham doesn't want any more warehouses. It was loud and clear, and I know you're trying to slip one in here. But I think the board needs to listen to what the town asks them to do, which is, we don't want any more warehouses. So, Mr. Martinez, can I ask a question? You, hey, I'll answer anything.
You mentioned put more teeth into it. What, so what, what proposal would you actually?
In the past, so for example, what I said to back in the day with Victory and with Amazon. Let's, let's find them. Let's find them a thousand dollars. If I see a truck at four o'clock in the morning pulling in, or I see it, it's hard to do. They're gonna get slapped with a fine. Let me give you an example. There's a, there's a system in place in Bellingham right now via the water department. This has been going on for years. If you have an old meter. And that meter's gotta be changed, and they don't change the meter, the meter text, meaning the cap. We have select board last year, find a resident, thirteen thousand dollars a resident. Thirteen thousand dollars because the D P W couldn't get in to change the meter. Now, if we can do that to a resident who didn't have thirteen thousand dollars, that was one of the toughest decisions the board ever made. I don't understand why we can't put a fine on a builder. You know, and even during construction, I mean, there, there are, it can be done. You just have to have the, to do it. So a condition can be in there, but if you can't control a condition, there are ways to do it. So if they do bulk storage and it's higher than the limit, or if the noise is louder, or if a truck idles and Mr. Kohler can hear it. Thousand dollars an hour until they fix it. That's how you do this. The other way you do it is you just say no more twenty-four by seven. It is not this board's responsibility to make it easy for them to find a tenant. It's not your responsibility. It's not the town's responsibility to allow them twenty-four by seven. Because what happens, just like with Campinelli, they built that building, they did twenty-four by seven, it's operating, then they turned around, they flipped it. Now, once they flip it and sold it for seventy-five million bucks, you can't do anything to that, that new owner. You can't, it's really hard to enforce, but if there are conditions with fines, you need to think through what those fines are. They're more after control, who really goes into that building. And those are the things that I really would love the board to think about. No twenty-four by seven, it's not your responsibility to make it easier for them to find a tenant. If it doesn't work for their business plan, they can find another location. The scenic road, how many trees, through the chair, how many trees are they proposing to remove? Zero. So, so all the trees that are now within, could I see it looks like about forty feet of frontage? You're gonna put that building behind the woods that are there?
Yes.
You're not removing one tree.
No, trees are being removed in, inside of the stone wall.
The fuck with them, not at all.
Inside of the stone wall, which is public right away, no trees.
Are you planning on any plantings or anything along those lines? And I'm gonna ask this, because I asked the board this with this. Monstrosity at the end of Maple Street, I'm just gonna bring it up. We talked at length about mature trees. We did. The builder was, yeah, we'll do mature trees. What they're putting is two-inch camper trees, deciduous leaves, that's not what we talked about over and over again, but that's what they put in there. And that's what ended up in the decision. I don't know how that happened, but it happened. Because I talked about, when you're going west, uh, east on one forty. And you're right in front of that, you know, what, PJs or just before PJs, current, you know, left, all you see are bays. And I remember describing it, when you're there idling and you look, you're gonna see nothing but bays. Ask them to put up nice fencing, ask them to put up large trees to block it off. They're not doing any of that. And I looked in right through the decision, it didn't get in the decision. I scratched my head. Why didn't it get in the decision? We talked about it at length one night, just like I'm doing now. I give all these ideas and some ideas work. I mean, the burn in front of Victory and the trees, they did a wonderful job there. You guys. Made sure that happened and it happened. But some of these other projects, they just, I don't know, I think we missed something, or we ought to go back to that builder. And have them fix those streets. It's just, it's awful. But for them, it, you just need to, no more twenty, the only way to control is twenty-four by seven. And I'll show you the picture, it's on my phone. And I didn't take the picture for this meeting tonight, guys. I just took the picture, walked my dog, and it really aggravated me. When I started going to Victory. Now, I know Amazon goes back and forth from three in the morning to five, and you heard it at the town meeting, the woman. That talked about what it's done to her, her home. You know, she bought it before Amazon, and she, it's barely livable there with all the noise. Every truck we had, every, it's just, we're compounding the issue. So I'm asking the applicant, come back with something different. We don't need twelve bays, we don't need tractor trailers. If you can't do it, we don't want twenty-four by seven. I'm a neighbor, I don't want twenty-four by seven. None of the neighbors want twenty-four by seven. That's the only way you can control a tenant from having tractor trailer truck twenty-four hours a day, because you can't control the folks delivering. Who are coming across the country or across the, it's out, it's out of everybody's chance. I can't expect them to have a police person there or a security guard. They're gonna show up, where they're gonna go? Walmart? Walmart's already a big truck, a truck stop. That's, that's kind of what we're looking at. Now, so, I know I've said it, you've heard me many times, I appreciate you allowing me to, to say this, but. I just think everyone with that, we just have enough. And I would love to be at the next meetings, you know, I just, um. Thank you. I hope, I hope I didn't offend anybody. I know it's not an easy job.
Just to pick up on something you said, though.
We, what?
Done.
Yes, sir.
My understanding, you can't impose fines in our decisions. It, it can, bylaws can be added and changed to, uh, penalize certain things. But we can't create penalty.
Yeah.
We can't, we can't impose penalties.
Alright, well, fair enough, fair enough.
We liked him over.
But we could, we can sort of maybe make them really tight, and tighten them up a bit. And say, you know, the sound, whatever. I mean, I, I just don't believe in sound studies. I don't believe traffic studies, because a traffic study with Amazon and Victory, they got blown out within twelve months. You know, we also talked about they would never add in, in another building back there. And three years later, the applicant's back and they want to build it, the new owner wants an extension. I mean, we, we talked about this nausea about not allowing that building to get bigger. Now it's gonna go up almost to High Street. But I'm just, you get to a point where you just say, enough's enough, you know, put a hockey rink in, you know, do, you know. No, not really, but.
Anyone else in the, um.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, Peter Gabriel's had his hand up on Zoom for a while. I don't know if you wanted the, maybe transition.
Mr. Gabriel?
Thank you. Peter Gabriel took it on his road. Um, go back to something Mr. Saltbury had brought up. You know, we're talking about putting bulk storage to the north, which the applicant says it's only a possibility of being used. Um, if we did move the building to the north and took it away from the residents and put the bulk storage to the south. That it's only a possibility of it being used, wouldn't that mitigate some of the sound of the neighbors? Not that I want this building, it's dead wrong, but why not move it? I don't understand why we can't move the building.
I mean, Mr. Chair, so, uh, Mr. Gabriel, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so we did in the very beginning, we evaluated several different options for where the building would be sited and where the parking would be sited. And really key for circulation was lining up our driveway with the Campinelli driveway across the street. For the best traffic pattern on Maple Street. So sliding the building north as you're suggesting would move the driveway south. Towards the abutters, and then you would only have a stagger between those two driveways, so you, you inherently create a conflict. If we have a truck exiting and they have a truck exiting, so better site design is to have the driveway lined up, which really kind of. Pushes the building to where we have it located.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't work for the residents. You said you wanted to be a good neighbor, stick in that warehouse, and their backyard does not work.
So the, the driveway that's on that end of the building is strictly for emergency vehicle access. There's signs on. Mr. Drang's plan on each island at the end of the parking that says emergency vehicles only. And same at the other end of the building, that's emergency vehicles only. And so we've put really a dead wall of the building, no windows, no doors. Facing the neighbor, and then where the building ends, we've worked with our sound consultant and the town's peer review sound consultant to design. This extensive sound wall that varies in height to make sure that the sound generated from our site. Do not exceed the levels that are prescribed in the bylaw. So I think. Kind of the opposite opinion is that you've got the, the dead wall of siding. You've got no lighting essentially on that side of the building. You have the sound wall with plantings and the stockade fence, and so we've done. What we can to create both the visual barrier and the building barrier that's facing with direct abutters.
Alright, Mr. Chair, I, I totally disagree with the sound studies. And if you look at where I sit and I work from home every day, I hear the Amazon trucks. Backing in and their horns blowing all day long. And that's quite a bit further distance than this building will be for me. So I cannot believe a wall is gonna stop the sound of that facility. So as a neighbor, I would really wish we do not put this warehouse here. It will disrupt. Quite a bit, quite a few neighbors.
Thank you. Get him in the red shirt, I believe you had your hand number one, what?
Yeah, I just, to thank your name and address, please. Number one, you talked about in the bylaws. Oh, my name is James Holmes, I'm at one seventy-five North Peach.
Man, I fucking waltzed in the back.
There's two, two things I just wanted to, to mention. You, you mentioned that you cannot do any type of fines, that must be put in the bylaws. What do we have to do to get that changed?
Proposed by law changes, and work with the cap.
Well, yeah, if it's a bylaw change, you would have to go to the town meeting for, for a vote, so. I just don't know if we are allowed to even put fines in.
We'd have to look into that.
Yeah, so that's kind of a more, a little bit more to it that I'd have to look into.
Okay, and secondary question really is from the standpoint of making sure that these people, while they're building, meet all the requirements. And there must be some replications because of that. For example, we did a sound study and this wall will do certain things. What happens a year down the road when you find out that it doesn't do half of what they say it's gonna do? Same thing with the, uh, when you talked about putting up trees to cover the front of the building and they put little tiny little bushes. In front of it and it doesn't do anything, and it was put in the original building plan on what it was supposed to do. Now, there must be some type of way to, number one, ensure that those things are properly done in the first place. And secondly, that there's some type of ramifications if they don't meet those, those needs. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
One question. I lived in another town before we lived here, and there was an issue to deal with the, um, development we lived in. And we were under, told there, and I don't know if it's the same everywhere, but up to four years after something has been built. And the development we were in, they hold a bond from the contractor, because when things are built. You know, things have to be fixed afterwards. There's always some human error, the swale doesn't work, we need this. So they have about four years with a, it's like an escrow account, it's a bond, they're bonded by, is that applicable here? Because if it is, then if they're not building, putting the trees in, and the things they promised to do, maybe the bond needs to be looked at until I take the money from them. No?
So you're referring to a surety bond essentially, is. Um. Well, I know that typically what happens is if there. There's usually bonds associated if you're working within the right of way, or if there's something associated with the mass, like mass D O P. Typically, what would happen is, um. Typically, what would happen is, um, you would be protected. Well, basically what would happen is before occupancy occurs, there's a walkthrough for the site. Now, for example, one of the problems that are coming up with like mechanic in Maple Street. If during that walkthrough, the trees aren't being adequate, if there's issues with, um, you know, if the trees aren't surviving, typically you're required to, uh, basically replace those. Now, sorry, going back to your question, you're saying that is, if there's a way to push that out?
No, my question is, did the town require any kind of insurance? Or a bond, I'm not even quite sure. I just know it's some, some kind of financial, um, similar to a national account. And it's, in, in our situation, the town had it for four, four years from the date of completion of the, well, it was four years after the development was built. So there were problems in the neighborhood after the development was built. And you went down to City Hall and they said, yes, we have a bond for that, we'll contact the contractor and require him or her to repair it.
Sure.
So I'm wondering if this new building, the one on the corner, because we did go by that recently, I saw a whole trees. And I thought, wow, I wonder how long it's gonna take for them to grow up. But if there's a bond and people are saying, what, what's the enforcement here? Is there any way that the town enforces plans after the fact? Do they have any, what is there?
It's an answer, but, so, the bond, I think that you're referring to with the other town for the four years. That's most likely a surety bond for a subdivision, which that's required, that Bellingham does require that.
Okay, so that's residential.
Of course, this is a little bit different, because this is a private commercial site. So, basically, like I was saying, is when occupancy comes, usually what happens is we'll have conditions in the plans that require that they're met prior to occupancy. If that makes sense. So there's no, usually no bond unless they're working in the roadway. That's typically what happens. I'm not too sure how it has been done in the past for a lot of private sites, I can look into it. I will tell you that I started this position on Monday, so I'm still kind of getting used to a lot of this stuff. Um, but, basically, what you're, what you're referring to with the bond is for a residential subdivision.
Yeah.
So.
And, and, man, we should be doing that in Bellingham.
Yeah, which this is just a little different.
So for a commercial property, once it's occupied by a tenant or completed and somebody's gonna be in there, you can enforce any problems that arise?
You can, absolutely, so.
How is that, what, what is the vehicle for that?
That is the inspection prior to the occupancy. Now, you're saying that once it's occupied, there, there are controls in place.
Yeah.
So there are, we have a zoning enforcement officer in town, and I can tell you that there's been a lot of active sites where these things have happened. There are some items that, you know, for example, that the board hears that I think are a little bit trickier to enforce. That's why we're talking about these hours of operations. Um, there are, there are pieces in place that, yes. There are, you know, there can be enforcement on these.
But processally, it's, it's difficult, though. Uh, I'll give you an example, um, about water, right? So they, they put this building in and they do all their civil engineering, but I, I can tell you in the past, and I know we've had a lot of water this year. But, um, a handful of years ago, more like ten, when they started doing those movements, construction and stuff. I, I never had water in the basement, and all of a sudden I started having water in my basement. The water tables change. It's like, it's like an underground river behind my house in between where Mr. Gabriel's house is. You start moving things, you start removing trees, that water has to go somewhere. And I can tell you that when Victory went in, and I know it's across the street, but it was a big project water. So starting in December, when we had that first really bad rainstorm, I literally, my sump pump ran twenty-four hours a day. And it's now just stopping. And I actually, like ten years ago, actually had to put in an interior French drain, the new drainage system, had engineers probably do it all. So I took, I want water in my basement, but it's just nonstop. So my concern is that, you know, they, they, they now flatten some land and they dig up, and now that water has to go somewhere else. And I know they do their best to move it away, but again, that water has to go somewhere, and I just feel like our homes, and I know there are other people in my neighborhood that have had water as well, after all this construction. You can't, and if they cause some issues with water, it's really tough to go back to them after they have a tenant and enforce anything unless there's some form of condition. And that's, that's the challenge I think the building inspector runs into down the road, is like, they don't have anything that they can really do. There's no bond, you can't force them, they can just kind of go, and I'll give you another example, I had to change my well when they, when they widened Naval Street twenty-something years ago, and they gave us a sidewalk, they had to blast. But guess what? When they blasted, my well changed. I went from having clear water to brown mucky water. And I, and I contacted Mr. Frayne at the time, we'll take a look at it. Not much a town can do, we're gonna go after the developer who did the road. You already told me, sue me. So you know what cost me? Cost me two thousand dollars to put it in the new well. I should have left Maple Street then, but I didn't, because I liked the street. But the point is that, these are the things that really happen when you do this type to the, to the abutters in the area. And I can show you, I had a, you know, it was nice and flat, the water coming out of my sump pump going in the woods. It's that deep now, the trench, from all the water that's gone out. And you know water, I mean, I'm just concerned you had another building there, it's already wet, we know how wet it is back there. I'm just concerned I'm gonna have more water, or I'm gonna be replacing my sump pump. And it's expensive, and that's on me, not on the board, it's not on the builders. Thank you.
Any other questions, you know, let me start going.
Seventy-one North Main Street. I hear the noise all around, like more from the highway, but I do have a couple of questions. Um, and it's like a two-part thing, it kind of stems from the meeting we had last week also. Why aren't we pushing back some of the problems that we're facing onto the problem causers or scenarios? So this warehouse, if it goes in, we now know someone else has mentioned trucks could come in from anywhere, right? There's no facilities for these guys or girls, whoever's driving these trucks. Do they have a facility, sanitary facility for trucks, so instead of having their, um, their special yellow bottles and all their other kind of things that get tossed? What will this building have for twenty-four seven facility for the trucks? Truckers, workers on the outside of the building. So if the building is closed on a Saturday night, and that other guy comes in from Ohio, and he's gotta use the whatevers, what is he gonna use? Well, that's not mine. What's he gonna use other than a bottle, right? What's in the plan for that? Because it actually happens. We can't say, oh, it may, it may not. In reality, it does happen. Maple Street is littered with pee bottles.
If I, before I think about how to answer that, I missed your name, I'm sorry.
Elaine Solon.
Elaine Solon. I also missed the previous.
No, the woman in the back.
Name and address, woman, uh, yes.
Eighty-six Chestnut Street, Bellingham.
Okay.
Oh, Suzanne Anderson.
Thank you very much, thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Just one second, sir.
Yeah, I've been waiting quite a bit. Well, the first one's to raise my hand, you're still.
Go ahead, sir.
Well, I didn't answer this.
I know, but.
Back, you come back, okay. Go ahead, you go, sir.
Robert Stern, twenty-two Stonehenge, it's gonna be right behind my house. The valuation of the house will probably be cut in half. That means taxes are gonna drop in half. What are you gonna do about that? In the, in the, with the snow coming off the back of that property, it goes right next to my well. It's twenty-five feet away.
What's your plan for snow storage?
It's on the plans. That required in your bylaw. So, yeah. Snow storage is shown here, along the front of the building here, there's a sizable snow storage area here, and another here. So essentially four corners, we have snow storage.
And you were doing twenty-five feet of property?
Not, not with snow storage, and that would be governed by the sound attenuation law, which is a a significant barrier, so we couldn't put snow beyond that, certainly.
Another question. All right, as we go down the road, if and when we get to conditions. Um, can you? You're the owner of this building, correct?
Correct.
You're responsible for common cam or common area maintenance.
Yes.
Correct.
Yep. So we would hire the flooring and sanding, landscaping contractors.
When you reach out to them, I would like to look at, uh, product that is not harmful, or providing advice and stuff.
We had this discussion.
I know we did, I just wanted just to start to hear.
Yeah, uh, I'm happy to look into it.
Yeah.
Setting this whole entire discussion aside, my advice to you as a professional engineer who's been an expert witness multiple times, I think it's terrible advice for you as the board to tell people how to treat their parking lots.
Okay.
Which product to use.
I'm not saying which product to use.
Yeah, so, so if, like if I gave you something, or you gave me something and said use this, I wouldn't recommend that you as a board did that to any applicant. Because God forbid someone slips into problems, and then me as the building owner says, well, the planning board told me to use that product, and you know how it goes from there.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
We'd like to keep as best we can, sand out of the yard.
Agreed, yep. And we generally run all salt on the parking lots and calcium on the sidewalks.
But you, you, you see my point with the sand?
Yes.
Okay, and now we're staying away from products, so.
Yes, and that's, I think that's a great idea. Um, I know we're kind of bouncing all over the place.
I understand.
So I wanted to go back, so as far as the snow storage was shown on the plan, we wouldn't be opposed to a condition that says in winters, not that we've had one in the past couple of years, where you have back-to-back-to-back snowstorms, we wouldn't be opposed to a condition that says if the snow exceeds the designated snow storage areas, then we would haul that offsite.
Okay.
Going back to the previous comment about, how do we know this gets done correctly? In many other communities, we've built projects in, there's been a condition that an as-built site plan has to get turned in at the end, it's not just the building location plan that simply showed the rectangle on the property line showing that we meet the setbacks, but a full site plan that showed limited curving, the limited sound wall, grading, landscaping, and in the bottom right corner of that plan, we put an engineer certification that says these are where we deviated from the approved site plan, you know. Catch basis one shifted right three feet to avoid ledge or something like that, or no deviations.
Mm-hmm.
So we would be amenable to a condition for the approval that says the same thing. You have to turn in a full detailed site plan that says what we built is actually what the board approves.
And then you enhance that. I'm, I'm, unfortunately, Mr. Martinez isn't here. Before you get an occupancy department, crap you ever run, we do a lot.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's standard.
That's pretty standard.
But in the as-built condition is standard as well. Okay, sometimes, some, some happen, some don't.
Yeah, and when there's a conservation filing, it always applies, but sometimes with just one word, does not.
And I guess, one more thing before I bounce back in, if I may. I think it's also important to point out, when we're talking drainage or talking water quality, that we did not, we chose not to approach at all in the hundred-foot wetland buffer.
Mm-hmm.
We stayed, we intentionally stayed outside of it. We could have enlarged the building and enlarged the parking, still met the planning board requirements, and have filed a notice, a notice of intent with conservation permission. We chose not to do that, so we're respecting that hundred feet of woods that surround the wetland that's kind of in the back center of the site.
And you've also met with Adrian Sterns.
We have, yep.
How many? Go ahead.
Andrew has met with, uh, Mr. Kohler, Mr. Mr. Sterns, and Mr. Kimont. Um, he's met personally with them, he's spoken with them, he's emailed them, as they indicated today. He emailed Mr. Kohler a copy of the sound wall photo and sound wall data and a link to the website. Um, so he tried to be very proactive from the very beginning.
Okay.
In dealing with the direct abutters.
Alright.
Back to the facilities question.
Certain.
I think.
I don't have an answer.
I think, you know, you get this twenty-four years I've been presenting to the planning board, congratulations. That's the first time I've been asked that question. Um, I don't know, typically, we, we wouldn't propose facilities outside of the building, that the, the intention is that the building would operate twenty-four seven and parking would be restricted, so that there would be access into the building to use facilities. Um, but I can't say I've ever been asked that before.
But in reality, in real life, what's proposed, you being an engineer, me being a town resident, but going wherever, we all see what actually, what actually happens, what's not in your plans, and that is what actually happens. Um, people go to liquor store, they get the nips, they toss them out the window. The drivers have nowhere to go, this, that, and they use there, and that is what it is, so. In any of these, I, I missed all the Victory packaging and all the other meetings and stuff like that, but anyway. So, but in reality, the truckers have nowhere to go. There's no truck stop nearby, this, that, they do end up in Walmart, but if you ever noticed in the Walmart parking lot, they have some trash bins and this and that, and the guys, the girls, whoever, the truckers hop out of their trucks and they put all their trash in the bins all up and down that parking lot over at Walmart. So is there gonna be like a dumpster for them for their Wendy's and tacos, or, you know, whatever kind of dump and bellas they have? But they do accumulate trash in their trucks.
Yeah, there certainly will be dumpsters on site.
So if you've never done it before, how's that for a new addition to your?
No, no, we have, we have dumpsters.
But no, something that's where the trucks are, so you, you're gonna have.
Yeah, at the back of the building, we have dumps, we'll have dumpsters in between the bays.
We're talking about our town, like here, so like in the last meeting, the last couple of meetings, the trash gets thrown out by the trucks, right? So this has to be something specifically to the trucks that are coming.
Let me get from a moment.
I don't know how to answer that, honestly.
I, I don't know how to answer it either, but let me tell you what we heard, um, you're aware that we had a town meeting.
Yes.
Last week concerning. We heard from, and we've heard for a long time, from, um, neighbors about, um, what are they called, urine bombs?
Trucker bombs, yeah.
That up and down, um, various streets in town. And it becomes, um, happens all year, sometimes more noticeable, uh, when we're doing a, a cleanup. Um, I, I don't have an answer for it. I wish we could go back and, um, look at one in particular, um, warehouse on Depot Street, but it was built long before this board was in place. What we have done, and we started, I believe, two years ago, we're going to, the mechanism's in town right now. Um, warehouses are contributing to an account to keep the streets from falling in clean. So once that is finalized, you'll probably be asked as a condition to donate to that initially. Um, and again, I'm getting ahead of myself, the plan is to try to have during the year some of these streets cleaned, using some of that money and, uh, either volunteers or nonprofit groups to do the cleaning, but we're looking at this.
Okay.
So it's something we started, um, maybe two or three years ago. So then.
Yeah, I'm almost done, I'd like to, to walk the way. Back on that, instead of having people come out and clean up that stuff, why don't we not have it talked about in the first place?
Yeah, I, I can't solve that, man.
I know you can, but, um, so why are, um, the sound barriers, why is it only meeting the minimum requirements? Can they expand on that? So instead of just being the minimum requirements, because we now know like that the the wind, you know, there's a lot of trees, the trees have foliage on them and stuff like that, if it's a clear day, the sound changes a little bit, so instead of being the bare minimums, can they go with one or two things above just the bare minimum? And I've got one question after that.
So the, it, it needs the decibels, and then there's different decibels depending on the receiver and the hours. And so we meet all of that, in some cases, we might be better, um, and really, a couple of decibels is, in this, is indiscernible, right, we're, yeah, indiscernible to the human ear? Right, because I just went through this on another project. Um, so we, we did, we, we fully met and exceeded the intent and the regulations relative to sound.
Just, just for one moment, it may be a misnomer on the verbiage of minimum. This is a scenic road. So what the scenic road has as a catch-on is more severe, more stricter requirements for noise abating. So they're reaching those stricter requirements. If this was built on another street that was not a scenic road, they would not have as strict requirements. So that is the benefit of the scenic road in regard, in regards to sound distribution and cutting down the trees. So definitely not a minimum, the standard's a little higher, that he has to maintain than if it wasn't on a scenic. So definitely not a minimum, the standard's a little higher that he has to maintain than if it wasn't on a scenic road. I hope that answers that question.
Answer that one. Last one is, um, it, it's kind of like a two-part question, but it's similar. It's, um, you said it could be outside storage. Are there anything, those materials out there, concerned?
No, no.
Or anything that likes to ruin that gentleman's well, if anything's spilt, this, that. So as far as anything.
Don't hesitate.
Potentially corrosive, bad for the environment. I mean, diesel, all that kind of.
So there's separate regulations through the fire department when you get into any kind of classified order. Over gallonage, depending on what it is, that, that's a whole separate licensing process. You know, depending on the quantities, the state fire marshal, we don't get involved in their view. We're, we're not talking about
that type of.
That type of, no. No, it, it's small. It's, it's sixteen thousand square feet, which in terms of outdoor storage is, what's a package by? Four hundred?
A little less.
Yeah.
Well, onto the next topic. Based on the discussion that happened with the butters, it's come up a couple of times that there's a downward slope behind the building. I know that stormwater's not supposed to leave the site, and I know that is one of the topics that, that we probably need to make sure that the peer review of that. I know today's day four for you, but before we, before we sign off on this, there probably needs to be, unless you're ready to have it now, I know the stormwater can't leave the site.
No, no, that's not.
But go ahead.
So stormwater management guidelines say that you have to do a pre-development model of a site and a post-development. And for the design storms, your rate of runoff has to be equal to or less. And, and so we, Mike's designed two separate stormwater systems.
Okay.
One underneath the parking lot to toss the rooftops, one at grade that takes the parking lot.
Yeah.
All designed fully in accordance with Massachusetts Stormwater Management Guidelines and peer reviewed by the towns.
And period. That's what, what I wanted to make sure has happened. I know you're in the middle of it, or maybe this part, we've gone past this.
We've not passed it.
But I'd just like to have a second set of.
You have.
But your peer reviewer has, has reviewed it fully. And we, we, we did get quite a few comments and we addressed those comments. And that's why the follow-up just has those seven or eight items that I mentioned. So was there discussion about the downward slope and is there any peer review comments that they had that you had to address? They've addressed, they, they reviewed the whole plan. There were no comments about slopes. No changes that. There were some, there were some comments about stabilization and seeding in the basin area. Uh, they did specify, they pointed us to a specific location in the bylaw that specifies the seed mixture. So to your question, there were some. So there were some changes. I just, I just realized that. That, that's, that's what I wanted to get out.
Yes.
They have, you guys did go back and forth.
Yes.
Peer review, did make some changes. And I just wanted to make sure that the butters that have been here more than once, those concerns that they just brought up again were at least brought up. And it sounds like they were.
Yes.
They were.
Just, I don't want to get too off topic here, but you know, there's two separate things that we're talking about.
Yep.
Stabilization, which is like, you know, that I think was the root of the comment. The other thing that you're referring to as far as the post-development versus pre-development.
Yeah.
There's nine points that they have to look at, make sure that it doesn't decrease. And the peer review didn't be.
Did do that.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Important parts of it.
That's, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Can you, um, and that's their normal work, but it's come up again and again, as we never addressed it in this meeting.
Just to note, too, we got another, we still have a hand up.
Okay.
Soon.
And we're at an hour.
I know.
Yeah, we're, we're getting.
And you, uh, just for the audience, I see a lot of new faces here. Rob, can you articulate what a peer review is? And it's the process that they pay for, we choose the peer review, correct?
Correct. Yes. Bas- basically, anyone wants to know what a peer review is, uh, the applicant has their engineer on board to design the project. The town requests a peer review, it's a third party, uh, engineer, basically at the applicant's expense. They have another engineer review the project. They report any discrepancies or comments to the board and to the applicant. The applicant works through any comments and basically make sure that everything is complying with zoning, stormwater, uh, management, um, general engineering practices, that sort of stuff. And I know there's been a few, uh, rounds of peer reviews for civil engineering, which that's where one of the comments came up was stabilization. Hopefully that clarified, so.
Mr. Chairman. I just want, I just want to make a couple of comments really quick.
Sure.
Andy Parker, twenty-five third Ave. Um, as far as the keying goes, we've seen this movie before, Depot Street didn't work. As a former, um, employee of the town, I personally installed the signs on Depot Street and they just ran them over. Uh, I just want to make sure that doesn't happen again. We have a beautiful sidewalk on Maple Street now. That's probably going to get destroyed now as well. Uh, you don't have to comment, you can comment after. I have a few things. Uh, I think it's imperative that High Street does not get used whatsoever, no matter what the sign says. Um, I live in the area. I have a one-year-old and a three-year-old and my wife likes big ones. Uh, if a trucker goes down that road and realizes he can't go down there, is he going to turn around on my street? Should my wife be concerned with our kids? Uh, the biggest thing that I see about this, and we saw it with Trimark, is water, public drinking water. This building's going in an already depleted part of the town where our drinking water is not good, to be nice. Well, number five on Tongue Street is our lowest producing well. It probably produces about ninety-five gallons per minute. Um, well, seven and eight, which is that Hartford treatment plant, are sucking up sludge. Our best producing well at well number twelve on Cliff Road was our best, but it's been under construction for probably about two years now, with levels of P-boss down. So my question is, how much water is going to be going into this place? Obviously, fire suppression one. And this is hypothetical. Let's just say that a marble and granite top company go in there. And the water ban happens like it does every year. Are we going to make sure as a town that this, whatever it may be, I'm going to use a marble and granite top because it demands high amount of water? Are we going to make sure that they're compliant with the water ban? Because I think public drinking water is more important than a quote-unquote hypothetical again, shot using that water. So I think it's important that we have the water. Do we have the water? You know, I know, I know it's not really a question you get to answer as the, uh, board, but I think it's a concern. Thanks.
Okay. First, I'd like to address your comment about the water. But I can show my, for, since I'm on the board. Uh, we've tried to address as best we can and work within the parameters that we have. We do the best we can. I know people will not want to hear, not the fact that our hands are tied, but as a board, we have very limited ability to control water use.
Understood. That water treatment plant's been operating since the eighties. There's been very little updates to that treatment plant.
I understand. And I, you know, I was, a concern I raised when I first moved here as a resident, which got me involved in the town. Going back to line one two, they said. So thank you for your comments.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Hold on, we have someone else.
I need to. Sorry.
Yep. Can I go if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman? Uh, I'll be very quick.
You need to pee, hold on for a moment.
Yeah, sure. No problem.
To expand on that, a couple, I think at the last planning board meeting, there was a select person here and it was asked, what percentage of the aquifer are we drowning against because it's limited?
Yes.
Do we have that answer yet? And if not, can we get it? We can get it. It was brought up, I believe, at the town meeting. With how much are allowed to pump? Correct. And what percentage of that are we? We'll try to reach.
Oh, yeah. Um, we do have that number, Steve. I don't have it off the top of my head, though, but we do have that number.
It was, it was outlined at the, uh, town meeting last week, and I'll try to get it to you as.
I don't remember hearing that.
I don't think it was at the town meeting. It was at the, uh, MBTA subcommittee meeting that we discussed the.
You're correct.
So, yeah, I do not have that number. I did not know that was asked at the previous hearing, so.
We will have that. Thank you. Mr. Gabriel.
Thank you, sir. Um, two very quick things. And one, I want to reiterate what Mr. Martinez said. Um, and this may sound strange, but about three to four years ago, between my house, Mr. Martinez's house, Mr. Peters's home, we've had about six trees literally fall over. And when you look down, all of a sudden, we have a river running over there, right underneath where the tree was. And that's never happened before Victory went in. Um, so I should point a reference. But to go back to the lovely thing of urine bottles all over our street, um, when this decision is drafted, could we not put a, um, a, a statement in there, whatever you want to call it, I'm sorry for the word, um, that the frontage of this property is clean on a weekly basis, when the landscape is committed to clean the lawn, that would cure at least a couple hundred feet of Maple Street, that they clean it every single week? I don't think that's too much for an ask.
We, we can, we can discuss it. And I, I don't want to, I can't speak for the applicant right now, but it could be a condition.
No, but I, I can, I can tell you this, that on, on occasion, um, my wife will call Corellic Farms and complain, and they'll send the crew out there down to Maple Street and clean their section. So it's not, other question asked them to clean their property.
Yeah, I think you misunderstood me. I'm not saying to have a question. When we get to the point of conditions, it will be conditioned and will be addressed. I don't, I don't, I don't see the applicant shaking his head, all of a sudden, no. So I think that's a condition as we get there. Anyone else in the public or online?
Uh, Bryant Hall, thirty-four High Street. So I think the residents spoke pretty loud and clear recently about, you know, our feelings on additional distribution centers.
Uh huh.
And, uh, I think, speaking for myself and probably some other people, we're not anti-development, so to speak. We don't want to restrict, you know, developments to the point where people can't develop their property and business owners can't, uh, you know, earn a living or, or create, you know, businesses that, uh, create jobs and so on and so forth. But this is another distribution center.
No.
There's twelve bays there. So you can shake your head and say it isn't, but you probably maximize that space with those maximum amount of trucking bays for that space. And you're asking for twenty-four seven access or twenty-four seven availability. But you can't tell us, you know, the hours that it's going to operate. A lot of the conditions don't have teeth. I think a good remedy for this is just come back with something that's not a distribution center. There's lots of things that can be developed there.
It's not a distribution.
That doesn't have to have twelve bays. And, and, and that's the problem. Urine blocks, trash, sound, trucks. It's eighteen-wheelers we have a problem with. It's getting another one rammed down our throat, you know, under the wire. And, and I don't begrudge them for filing the A and R. Good for them. It's, it's a legal remedy, just like the, the tap, the, uh, the thing that Stephen Goyette did. But it's just egregious. I mean, when is enough enough? You know, we don't need another distribution center on Maple Street. Make it something else. Come back to us with something that's more palatable. There's not twelve more bays of trucks with trucks going up and down, idling, you know, you're killing them. We have no way to punish the people that are there, you know, idling. It's just a whole bunch of like, you know, stuff in the ether. But we know that thing when it's open, you have no control of the tenant who goes in there, and then if you sell the building, we'll all better off. Then we got another nightmare. So a, a, again, I mean, it seems like an easy fix. Don't try to ram down another distribution center on Maple Street with twelve trucking bays. We know it's going to be eighteen-wheelers going up and down. You know, we've got enough, enough of that, and the town spoke. So it'd be great if you guys would listen to us. That, that's, you know, what I'm asking.
Yes.
We, we are. You know, I'll respond.
You, to me?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I, I just. I don't want to bicker or go back and forth.
Okay.
It's just sixty thousand square feet is not a distribution.
It's got twelve bays for eighteen-wheelers. You know, and the other question, one more question, is there anything that prevents them from extending that building into the, so into the area that's slated for storage right now?
No.
It, it, your. So you could put another four bays and have another four loading docks in there.
Hypothetically, if we chose to expand the building, we would have to go through this entire process again, planning board and special, and scenic road.
Nobody wants this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I don't know how to, how to answer a question. Hello?
Andrew, yes.
Yes, hi, I have a quick question. I'm at the end, other end of Maple Street. I live at three seventy-nine Hartford Ave. And with all of these warehouses on Maple Street, the traffic here at Hartford Ave, Maple Street, and here I am, I'm going to complain, makes that school zone, uh, insane. If anybody has ever tried to get in and out of the schools during a day, you are constantly fighting trucks. Walking my son to school, nearly impossible. We stood there once for ten minutes and watched trucks and cars and everybody fly by. So my question is, with more trucks going down there, what is going to be done about the safety of this end?
I think there are plans to potentially widen Hartford Avenue long-term.
I don't know how that, I don't know how that makes the school safer, widen the road.
I, I, I don't know, ma'am.
Okay. Because walking, walking these roads with all of these, walking these roads with this constant truck traffic is crazy. And watching eighteen-wheelers try to turn that corner to go down Maple Street while I'm walking mine to son to school is a really scary thought. So I didn't know if there was anything that was being done.
We have encouraged the, um, warehouses on Maple Street.
Yeah, well, it used to be no through trucking, no trucks could come in this way, and the sign is gone.
We, let me finish for a moment. We
Sure.
Encourage trucks to come up, uh, Maple Street from the south and exit to the south. The design at, um, Amazon was designed to make it virtually very difficult to take a left turn, turn coming out of Amazon. Um, we put an aisle in there for that purpose. So we, we have attempted to put a measure in place to control the traffic going southbound from Hartford Avenue.
Yeah.
On, on Maple Street.
Yep.
Uh, I can't, there, I, I know there are exceptions, ma'am, but we have done as best we can to control that over the past several years. Uh, one, one last question. Someone in the back.
Ken Hamley, where this field road. I've listened to the impact of these residents from Maple Street. They're horrific. They're, they're just outright, outright horrific, especially in High Street and whatever the rest of our own streets. I mean, that's a random well, the Martinez of seventy-five thousand, water running here and there, noise at four AM. You know, when, I've said it before, you know, when is enough enough? And I just got one other thing to say. You're, you're talking about mitigation. This should not be mitigated. It should be denied.
Anyone else? What are the next steps?
Well, I think there's some, some homework to deal with, discuss some items that just need to be, uh, discussed, and especially the traffic. Peer review getting closed out, so.
Yeah, if I, if I could, I'm sorry to interrupt. So the one item that's traffic is, is stuck on, we, I think you were copied on the email today uh, from Jane to Sean, and it just has to do with the Saturday trips.
Capacity.
Yeah, and, you know, we've, Sean, in twenty-five years of being a traffic consultant, has never been asked to model, to model Saturday trips, and in fact, we've actually limited data to do so. And so that's really the one thing that, and, and I think you have this email, that's the one thing that the traffic consultants are stuck on. But the town's consultant is saying that they're out of money, so they can't respond to that. Based on the deposit that we gave, they view that funds. So we're happy to provide additional funds to the town, so hopefully the two traffic guys can wrap that up in the next week or so.
Yeah, that's what I'm, yes.
That's what he's going to get to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That just came in today.
Yep.
As a rule, we require items to come to us the Friday before.
Right.
Ideally. So that just came to us today.
Yep.
So, you know, in all fairness, we have to, you know, parry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we, we.
We understand.
Your next lead.
Yep.
So I think, you know, we have a list of some items we have to address as we move forward.
Yes, sir. Our, our goal would be to get everything wrapped up in the next week, so we can come back to you in a couple of weeks and say, graphics checked, everything. traffic's checked, everything, civil's checked, everything, sound checked, everything. Here's the answers to the board questions, so hopefully we can start looking.
And the neighbors' process as well.
Yes, yep.
And you, you have, you need to get a hold of them, you know. Please let us know, but I think you've dealt with a lot of the neighbors from the beginning and some of the people um, have raised some strong points. Do you um, what's the decision deadline?
Uh, I believe it's in June.
Okay, so we're fine on that.
Let me just double check. I believe we'd be requesting an extension to deadline date to June twenty-sixth. That way we can get this all, you know. You get that finalized with the traffic report. Um. That makes, and then basically continue to the May twenty-third.
I can work with you to get that extension.
Okay, Matt, you have the thing right here, actually.
Can I just ask, are all these details realistically going to be dissolved in two weeks?
Yep.
Realistically. We have, we have a tendency of applicants to not underestimate.
Well, the decision debt or the decision extension goes to the end of June, so if it had to be pushed again to June again to render an approval or denial, you know, you have some flexibility. That's much.
Pick up on something you said.
Go ahead.
Sir, in technical terms, although it appears we're giving you an extension to the twenty-third, we need that information. Are you, are we from tomorrow? So is the first meeting in June more realistic for you? To button everything up? You know, in, in all, in all fairness.
Yeah, yeah, we, you know, I do want to be respectful of the board's time and other applicants' times, we've taken two hours this evening, so with the first meeting in June, you know, that would certainly give us all the time to get everything in, peer review back, and so hopefully we're coming here to that meeting to discuss conditions and.
I'm just going to line up in six lines for that, no new developments.
So I would entertain a motion for a continuance to um, June sixth. The first meeting in June, so. Do I have a second?
Second, with the question of what's the date for giving the extension to?
Oh, wait, I, I think that was.
June twenty-sixth.
June twenty-sixth. Okay, so, yeah, I'll second.
Any discussion and motion on the floor? We're giving this to the first meeting in June. Can I say it all right?
Yes.
Then aside.
Right.
Bill, I.
Bill.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Just sort of, well, I'll sort of think about for the extension.
Oh.
In this city. Let me be the motion.
One for champion. Yeah, there's two, there's two, two applications.
Yep.
Uh, I'll move to acceptable.
We have motion of order and a few more extensions to um, June twenty-sixth. She's there with still. Discussing business.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Senator Scotty, Brian.
Bill, I.
Bill.
That motion passes in Anderson.
Okay.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing. Um. Preliminary subdivision with W L. I'd like to read the uh, the applicant, WS Fellyham Four Associates LLC in orders of Fellyham North Main Street to LLC. On a Hartford Avenue Associates Limited Partnership, comma, WS Fellyham Four Associates LLC and Barney Brothers San Antonio Travel, opposed to preliminary subdivision. The clauses of parcels identified, the succession map twenty-four, lots ten, twelve, and sixteen. Map thirty, lots seventy-three dash one, map thirty-one lot three, and having a potential utility area of a ha- hundred seventy-nine point plus or minus acres. The proposed parcels meet the bulk dimensional zoning requirements described in the zoning bylaws and the requirements established by way of subdivision regulations. The plans were prepared by Polar Engineering at three fifty King Turnpike Brand, South Buramad, oh one seven seven two. Ralph, bring us up to speed on this.
Sure, so what's in front of us right now, it's a preliminary subdivision application. And for anyone who is unfamiliar with preliminary subdivision applications, which I know the board doesn't see these very often. But what it essentially is, is a pre-application meeting in a public forum. So what the applicant can do is is submit this application before a definitive subdivision. And really, it, it lacks the details of a definitive subdivision. That's going to have more of the engineering, the stormwater design. Um, usually we'll have more of the traffic reports and such that goes along with an actual definitive subdivision. This is just really for discussion purposes before the definitive subdivision is in place for the board or in the public to give guidance on the application. Um, I can let WS explain why they've submitted it, um.
Yeah, but I'll do, I think I need to open the public seat.
Correct.
Bill, a second. Any discussion on the motion up in the public meeting? Call for the vote.
And Brian.
Bill, I.
Bill.
Before we turn it over.
Well, I already kind of explained what that is, so I think.
You want to work with the applicant? He wants to introduce himself for the audience.
Good evening, good to see everybody again, Austin Turner with Baller. And uh, I think the man next to me doesn't really need introduction, but Jeff Curly. Um, so as Rob was mentioning, uh, we have filed a preliminary subdivision application for the board, and I think you articulated it very clearly as to what that actually is and kind of the, what we're expecting to do with you this evening. You know, effectively, that's been filed really to affect an additional preservation of, of the zoning that was in place in time that application was filed. And that, of course, that's the opportunity to engage you, but really essentially preserves popular rights under the zoning that was effective at the time the application was accepted and deemed complete at that time.
So, so with basically what you're saying is that because of the new bylaw, you submitted this to preserve your rights.
That's correct, effectively, yep.
Effectively, right.
Yep. Can I make a point of that?
That's part of order.
No. Is there music playing through that block? There's a noise.
It's that, it's that.
Oh, because sometimes the public, the cable box is.
Now, this bit of vibration over here all night.
Is it?
Yeah. Or what is it? Oh, it's heating, it's taking heat, like.
Right here.
It's the ventilation.
Yeah, I actually turned the air.
All right, I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
By the way, thank you.
Sorry, we should.
I, I don't, we answered Phil's question, that is, yeah, that is the purpose of, of what's been for you this evening.
Can I ask you a question?
Um. There's zero intention of building this, is that accurate?
Uh, this, as of today, uh, that, that, yeah, I'd say that's accurate.
You? Uh, because I couldn't understand what it is you're proposing.
So, so really, what, what the preliminary subdivision plan, again, Rob articulated, is it's intended to provide, I'll call it schematic level design, that shows the creation or really, in this particular instance, in this specific instance, it represents a consolidation of the lots, which were written to the record at the beginning of this particular meeting. And it creates a new, what would ultimately be, presumptively speaking, a new public right of way, and those lots gain frontage on that, so it's the beginning and the schematic design for a subdivision. And as we mentioned a few minutes ago, having prepared that and filed it and documenting it as a lot that theoretically created under the subdivision.
Yep.
Comply with the town's dimensional requirements and that the plans that we produced are compliant with the subdivision requirements, that their lots are dimensionally conforming, maybe the logic factor, size, et cetera. Really, that's, yeah, there's not a lot of detail in there, as Rob mentioned, because at this particular stage of the process for a preliminary plan filing, as the town calls it, there is not a lot of detail required, it's intended to facilitate a conversation, and in this case, it's, it's a vehicle that allows for the preservation of zoning.
Is there input that you're looking for, or are you looking for a continuance to a future further date?
I don't think that's really at the board's discretion, I mean, there are feedback on the plan.
Yeah, I think it's, it's feedback on the plan, don't, it's my understanding that public hearing wouldn't remain open beyond this evening. There's a, a written decision that the town or written advisement that the town provides indicating um, comments or what have you, but we would have to address those in a future definitive subdivision filing, and there's a window of time.
So can I ask, are any more details about the business plan that you're ha- going to have for this, the, what type of building, what type of size, what type of what type of vehicles and all that stuff, we, we could walk us all through that tonight?
There's not any, there's so beyond the creation, uh, again, a theoretical creation of that road on the plan.
Yeah.
There are no proposed improvements beyond that which would be required to accommodate the new road. There's no building, there's no theoretical structures on there at all, it's.
And, and in the future, when you brought a definitive subdivision, you'd be changing it anyway.
Possibly, but it's a potential.
It can evolve between the preliminary and the, and the definitive, and then you would, to Austin's point, you'd be creating the road and the lots, and each of those lots, should a project be brought forward on those lots, would need to make the requisite filings.
Yeah, I guess my questions are provocative as far as how much input would we, I mean, if this was something that was really going to be built, we'd be wanting to bang it around, talk about it, have weigh-in from everybody. If this is something that's not going to be built, it's not, you, you're preserving your rights, but you're not, this isn't the ultimate plan that you come with the definitive. How much time of, I mean, this is a theoretical question, but I, do we want to, how much time do we want to waste on this? I'll be blunt about it, and maybe that's a question for, what, what procedural rules do we have to follow, what, what impact, we, we don't know the business case, we don't know all the, they're dividing up the lots, but they might come back different. It, the question is, do we waste any time on, and I apologize for using the phrase, but it sounds like you, I asked a question earlier specifically that you were preserving your rights under the new bylaw, because I don't know how much time to spend on.
We're preserving, just for clarity, we're preserving our rights under the, the original bylaw.
The original prior bylaw that was in fact before the new bylaw.
Let me clarify.
Yes.
The zoning bylaws.
Correct.
Yeah.
Requirements.
This is a mechanism that, sometimes you can roll off, up towards this, it is a fairly broad process. And as Austin indicated, there's bare minimum schematic level detail that's required to show the lots in the shape of the road in this case, what cul-de-sac, all of which complies with the requirements uh, in, in the town's bylaw. And the next step would be that more detailed filing, and it would describe not necessarily what would be proposed for a business based on each of those lots, but the engineering around the creation of the road in conformance that the, that the lots themselves will meet the requirements of the bylaw.
And so if I said without knowing what, what's going in there, traffic, density, all that stuff, is it a concern? I'll just leave it that way.
Well, to that point, so that's kind of the purpose of the definitive subdivision. So this is where this is unique, the preliminary subdivision plan, the whole purpose of it is if you're taking raw land, you're developing something, and you're getting input from a butters, from the town, from, you know, the board. With this, it's, it's unique because, you know, basically the board has to take a vote, you can either, there's three options, you vote to accept the preliminary plan, vote to accept with modifications, or vote to deny, but either way, it's just feedback. Nothing can, this doesn't mean that it can get built, the definitive subdivision is what allows anything to be built. So this is really just preliminary feedback from the board.
You're not expecting to follow this up next week to any, I don't know, ready?
There's already, we've already signed an A and R.
Oh, for this one already?
Yeah, that was on April.
Okay.
So Rob, thanks.
Sure.
Are we certifying in any way that this, or have you, um, said? Yeah, that looks like it, it's must be.
Nope.
And we're not with part.
No, wait, not, not required to.
We're pat, when we say, if we vote yes.
Yeah.
What are we certifying or saying?
You're basically just certifying that you reviewed the preliminary plan and given feedback, that's it, that's all this is. There's no, there's no approval as far as this, you're not saying that, yeah, you can build this road, because the purpose of the preliminary plans, like I said, it's just, it's basically when you're coming in for a commercial site plan, and you set up a, a staff meeting in town, pre-application meeting. This is exactly that, but in a public hearing setting. That is what it is, so when you get graced by town staff or board for, you know, well, it'll be town staff during the pre-application meeting, you know, that doesn't mean that permits are in hand, you can build this. It just means that you've basically given the go-ahead to continue down the definitive subdivision path.
Like that, I think my question is, what are we saying with our vote? I know it doesn't mean anything, but I don't know what this is. I can't certify that I understand that there's a, there's a cul-de-sac at the entrance of the home people entrance. Uh, I don't, I would have to have more information, I guess, is my point.
Correct.
To understand this, to vote on, and to vote, yeah, so is that something that's going to happen?
There is a vote that needs to be taken, correct, and it is a vote, it, it doesn't mean a.
If I may, I think it's perfectly within your uh, framework to, to indicate that you're voting to approve or voting in however way you want to vote in anticipation of further information being provided as part of the definitive subdivision.
I think that's the. Doesn't, isn't there some minimal amount of information that has to be presented to us? It's most.
Yes, that's what, that's what we have in front of us.
All right, well, talk us through it.
Let me ask the question, is there a difference if we vote no versus yes? Is there any difference in the process going through? No.
You, and you, and if I think Rob, correct me if I'm wrong.
There's no difference. I don't have enough information.
The, the board can also vote remain agnostic, you, you, you could, you could say, we, we acknowledge that the information has been provided, that, that's, that's an option. And I think, Ron, again, correct me if I'm wrong, but there is a process technically in place where the board has to provide whatever, I guess we'll call it feedbacks, it's not a decision, feedback in a certain window to the applicant writing, and then as part of this process, a definitive filing, incorporating whatever feedback may be authored in the feedback we provide. Would have to be filed within seven months, I believe, of this date here.
Correct, yeah, yes, correct, so the definitive subdivision has a lot more criteria, because now we're talking about, you know, the zoning bylaw, stormwater uh, management plan, and the stormwater standards for Massachusetts, general engineering practices, all that information. What Austin just mentioned is, is correct, I mean, basically, you're and, and basically an approval is just, like I said, it's saying that you reviewed the plans and that, you know, you basically support this moving towards definitive subdivision approval, you can vote no to it, if you don't, um, it, this is such a weird case. It, this is such a weird case, and I don't think you can remain agnostic, I think it's. It's basically approved, approve with modifications or deny, and if you deny, you need to submit reasoning for that. So, I know that what you're about to say, the approval criteria with. Your.
So if I, so if I came to that, like I just said, traffic. Lack of information as far as what type of building, what type of, all that stuff, that would be my reason, so is that a. And, and it sounds like there's not a.
But we should be, we should be clear though, so what, what this is, is a subdivision filing in the literal sense of the word, it is the, in this case, consolidation of lots. And the creation of a new public road. It, there is not a lack of information with respect to use, because the subdivision inherently does not require. The, also, the proposing of a use, it's just a land exercise. And the improvements that are contemplated here, the physical improvements, if you will, would be the creation of that cul-de-sac. And the roadway, its associated infrastructure, but in the context of this theoretical exercise. What the land is going to have on it is nothing, it's the creation of lots, the improvements are the road and the road only.
Yeah, so my question earlier is, what's the ramifications to you guys if there's a denial versus an approval? Is there a difference?
In, 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 in my understanding.
Nothing, nothing, so that, that's my point.
I think for the board, if you disapprove, there has to be reasons articulated for this approval. And, and again, information that isn't required for the filing, what you would like to see, I don't know.
Traffic, sightlines.
Yeah.
Well, that's, so sightlines are on the plan, sightlines are required for the driveway as a intersection, they're, they're on the plan, and they meet the standards as the.
And the intersection.
And those meet the standards as outlined by the town in your subdivision requirements. But again, there is no use proposed as this, there does not have to be, it's a subdivision, in this case, consolidation of property. And the theoretical creation of a new roadway, which lots.
Things like templates for the fire department.
Well, so.
So all that stuff.
But the, the thing, the thing with that, I'm not, I'm not being argumentative, and, and, my, my intent is not to be argumentative, my intent is to answer.
I was trying to engage the question.
Yeah, yeah, so what's embedded inherently in your subdivision requirements? There are minimum centerline radius, inside radius, outside radius, all those things.
Uh huh.
Are intended to contemplate the things you're talking about, emergency response access, so there are different classifications of roadways in your bylaw. Those roadways all have different geometric design standards, all of which are intended to capture the things you're talking about.
Uh huh.
See, this road here, I believe, is. Required by nature of zoning in place for the properties that are subject to this preliminary application, to be a collector road. And it meets those dimensional standards, which in turn. Would meet the emergency response things, but it's under a requirement, so to speak, by way of your subdivision requirements. To do all the turning templates, particularly at this level, the preliminary level, at the definitive's case, we would come in with a, a design that would be. More comprehensive.
And we could actually discuss them.
And we could discuss them.
But to be clear, that, that, again, whether we get there or not.
Yeah.
But let's play out the hypothetical, the definitive would also be a land exercise, it would.
That would.
Create more engineering detail around the creation of the road and demonstrate compliance with the lots. It, under this circumstance, we're creating the cul-de-sac and two large lots. Were we to pro- uh, propose a development on one of those two lots.
Uh huh.
That would require a filing under whatever threshold we're triggering. That would, that would be when you would get to review sightline, to look at parking requirements, to look at traffic generations, it would be the specific. Development that might be proposed on one of these pieces of land. That we're great, I'm just, I'm playing a hypothetical, you understand the process? The, the preliminary and the definitive are land exercises, creating a road and two parcels. And if we were to come forward and submit development on either one of those resulting parcels, they would be subject to whatever permit requirements. Exists under the bylaw.
Mister Chair.
I just hold on for one moment.
Sorry, thank you.
No, excuse me, just hold on for a moment. Let me ask you, you've been here all evening. Generally in the back earlier said. That someone, the process of the A and R, and the process of seeing it is a legal process. So look to the process that was used and available, to, they mentioned Stephen Goye, and the process he used. For the wars, on including future warehouse. So you are preserving your rights based on the legal opportunities you have available to you right now.
That's right.
Is that a fair assessment?
Correct.
Okay.
For sure, it's a state law, yes.
For sure, it's a state, Massachusetts general, is that person in the back articulating? Um, can we open it to the public?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's a public hearing.
It is a public, yeah. You gonna say something? Anyone in the public cabinet comments?
Yeah, all the carryo, eight second row. I'm a little confused about all of this, this is warehouse land or just another piece of land altogether?
Maybe I can take a stab at it, you know? This, I would try to take a stab, this is an engineering exercise. For the purpose of raising zoning. So this is the land that you know as Home Depot and the land behind it. So it's, it's just an academic exercise to show that they could subdivide it this way. And my understanding is that if the board votes yes, all they're saying is, yeah, you could. You engineered it, or you, you've at least laid it out. In a way that technically could be laid out under the bylaws, it's not an actual plan.
Alright, because that piece of land where the warehouse is, is owned commercial. So part of this exercise is to rezone it to residential, is that what you're planning?
I think all they're showing is that they can put a road in between.
In between where?
On the, in between the, this combined. At the end of the day, at the, just the legal reality. One of the concerns I expressed was just not having enough information to say yes or no, and not knowing what the impact of that would be. But the next step, the next step is the more meaningful step, where that actually has substance. But again, this is. An academic legal exercise to preserve.
I understand, but is the warehouse going through or not?
I just, let me, I wanna thank you, you've been one of the few people here from the very beginning, on the WS4S. And I want to thank you for that. What day was, um, Rob, what day was that approved? WS6S. That was there, very lovely, yeah, that's why I'm confused about why I go through the exercise.
They still wanna build that.
They still wanna build.
But they wanna make sure that they freeze their zoning, so they're going through this exercise.
They want to work to their zone.
Care, they wanna freeze it so they can continue to.
The applicant's laptop, uh, share screens, capabilities.
No, I'm not allowing you to.
I haven't tried yet, yeah.
Oh, there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, yeah.
We can see that, right, so this is our theoretical cul-de-sac. Uh, this is hard for it out right here, pop the screen. And then this is. The theoretical cul-de-sac, which we effectively follow the geometry of the existing driveway. Which, which met some of the standards, and then kind of zooming out. Like, you can kind of see it here a little bit cleaner, but what it does, is it creates this lot right here. Then it creates this larger lot in the back. As well, and both of those gain, though they have frontage on multiple color credit way, they meet the minimum frontage standards. For a legal lot on the new roadway itself, and exclusively on the new roadway itself, so it's not a.
Would you have an A and R for the road?
The A and R does not contemplate this lot.
But the lots.
Broken out.
Yeah, two entirely.
Separated the state, but over the safety, so overarching the safety. Gentlemen, in the middle. You really had your hand raised?
Yeah.
The only thing I was ignoring here.
Dave pulled up the room, I, I just, I apologize to ask a potentially dumb question here.
I knew.
So the.
Only them persons who aren't, aren't asked.
The warehouse, as you know, we all know and love here, uh, has been approved in a previous meeting.
Yes, sir.
So, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little bit of a loss on this whole process then, is this basically just by time?
Yes.
Yes, sure it is, so based on what happened, the town meeting, when the water was approved. This is an avenue they, they chose to pursue, as did they also did an A and R on a separate vote. That was made, um, the same night, the applicant for the Warren Art on the expiration date. So this is as a result of the mechanism that was approved to come. It supports them more opportunities within their property, freeze the zone. That was in place, prior to the actions that they set. I, I'm correct, that's right, I'm not, I'm not in your turn.
So by voting yes on this, you would give them that right, by voting no on this?
We still give.
It's really just the act of filing, it's the act of filing.
Sir, anything else I know, sir, it's confu- it's confusing for us, but it is. So to a warrant application, that it's a made available to the public, okay? This application process is made available to the authority to preserve their rights. To go back and present, or in progress prior to the zone change.
But the timing changes if you vote no.
No, nothing changes.
It's the act of filing, they filed it, therefore they froze their zoning, what happens now?
You have another question?
Gentlemen in red shirt, they'll get to Mr. Martini's home, uh, one seventy-five North Main Street.
So basically, what they're asking is if they continue just putting this group of land together, from these different people. That they want to hold on to the laws for warehouses. For sometime in the future that they wanna do it.
Right.
And I think, and now, in order for this to get approved, were to go to another town meeting, to vote yes or no. It would automatically do it, and all I can say is, the town has spoken, no more freaking warehouses.
That's it. Those guys.
No, no, no.
I know, I'm, I'm.
I, I, I just, I understand the procedural aspect of it all, I just have a question, Mister Chairman, um. And it sounds like there's a little confusion, you're trying to sort it all out, have you spoken with town council about this in preparation of tonight's meeting?
I personally am not.
Okay, then, then my recommendation would be, is not to take a vote until you have spoken to the town council, because this is a legal matter. And we know that Mister Salfer is an attorney, he needs time, he's had really good questions, I, I really don't think there should be any vote tonight. Until you have spoken with town council and got their advice on, on what the, a, a yes or no vote. They're not our attorneys, they're applicants, my strong suggestion is you make sure that you speak with the attorneys to understand both sides, yes or no. Before you say it, I mean, what's the big deal? I mean, really, there's not a timestamp to this approval, correct, there is, there's, there's no timestamp. You don't have to have it done tonight, I strongly urge you to talk to the town council.
Sounds smart. I believe it's forty-five days, and I'm not. Correct, and I'm not sure. Consider constructive approval at that.
Why don't we do that?
You're asking to say no.
Will we, um, go back to the public to see if anyone, um, soon has a question? I don't wanna. Anyone has got their hand raised? Anyone else in the public? Gentlemen, left hand side.
Ally Dealey, for doing him away. I'd like to make a suggestion, because we're sort of confused the daylights out of all of us, and this gentleman continues. Right here in the line, to refer, this is a subdivision. If it's a warehouse, it's not a subdivision.
So they're not, it's really confusing, but it, it's, they're not proposing as a warehouse in this application. They wanna build a warehouse that they already have a special permit for, they filed this so they can. They don't wanna build this, they wanna, they just simply filed this, once they file it, it's basically they froze their zoning.
So is it still zone commercial?
All of it? They have, they have frozen their, uh, zoning in time, so that, that the town vote that happened last week. Doesn't apply to them.
Which is what, right now, based on his filing, what is the zone?
Their, their underlying zoning would allow them to construct the warehouse that they've received a special.
Commercial.
It's whatever.
Could not change.
Start changing.
Do it, again, correct me if I'm wrong, so what's the reference to the subdivision?
It's just, it, it's an academic engineering to say they could, so if, if we wanted to, we could theoretically. Subdivide this lane, in, in.
It's not a file, right? Type of filing? Well, this is a mechanism under state subdivision control law, that would, at the time this plan is filed, would. Leave zoning in place the day it was filed, it doesn't change zoning to residential or any change of zoning at all. That would require a town meeting to do anything like that, this simply just says the zoning that was in place. The day this application was filed, is the zoning that's, that's in place for a period of time. Through complete, depending on whether we go through the definitive subdivision process or not, will be a number of years that, that zoning is frozen as defined, okay?
Uh, Mister Hall, do you have any question?
I just had a quick comment.
Please stand up.
I just wanna, thirty-four High Street, Brian Hall, I just wanna echo what Mister Martini said, I think it's in your best interest. Just pump the brakes, you don't need to vote on this tonight, I'm not a lawyer, I understand what they're doing. I, I, I just, I'm gonna research my own, I think you should all do it, I know what this A and R is, maybe Brian knows. Can they file this after they've already filed their initial application, it's been approved? I'm sure they're telling you they can, but I don't know if town council would agree with that, I, I don't know the answer, but I don't think you guys know the answer either.
They can do that, they, they can do that.
Yeah.
They're well within their rights to do this.
Um, so I mean, I would just say, you know.
And we weren't going to render a decision tonight, so I don't want people to think that's everyone involved.
Last question, gentlemen.
Can I see a copy of the map, where he put plans, I'm putting this thing? He had up on, on the board before the map.
I'm sure if you wanna give you.
Sure.
Oh, gentlemen.
Right behind you, sir. Showing to make you walk around.
Not a problem, I'm trying to figure out where. Okay, that's four ninety-five. So it's basically gonna put a street. Off of four ninety-five.
No.
Off of Hartford Avenue, but actually, exit off of four ninety-five, it's gonna be on the other side of.
No, sir. No, so what they're doing is putting a cul-de-sac adjacent to, um. The Home Depot warehouse, is that correct?
Right, but it's going down in between, what, what are these buildings?
Yeah, that, that cul-de-sac that you're seeing is basically, it's the same location as the existing driveway into.
Right.
Depot, so, just for reference. So again.
Entrance in.
Right, so just.
Overlays on top of it.
That's, that's completely crazy, right? But they're just saying, look. We could engineer this to do this, and it would comply with your bylaws, crazy, but it's, we could do this. And that's all that they're saying, they're never gonna.
We can say, okay, go ahead and build a warehouse.
No, no.
No, we've already spent it.
That's what it sounds like to me, it's very getting around.
They're, they're preserving their, their zoning. They're right under the zones. So there's. It's the act of filing.
So I, I understand. I understand. But one of the things that, that concerned me. Obviously, uh, you know, I'm in the butter of this property. Uh, one of the things that concerned me from the original, all the discussions we had about building that warehouse in the first place. Was. How do you get to where the warehouse is supposed to be, which is over here someplace? Okay? Traffic going through here. They were talking about a widening of Hartford Avenue. Okay, in order to get all of the trucks in and out and everything else. And this looks like just a way of. Getting a step done. Are they going to include? If, if they go ahead with this. Okay, are they going to go through all the plans that were discussed before with the Hartford Avenue expansion?
That's what they want. They want to build the warehouse that they've already permitted. This, this. This is just, again, it's, it's just a way for them to free, it doesn't. It doesn't have any impact other than to free their right to construct the building.
Right.
That they want to construct. So thi- this could have a big Mickey Mouse on it. As long as it was engineered properly. It is, it's the act of filing, so.
And it's not necessarily. Just you're using engineered. It's, it's not. Not engineered. It's, it's subdivision of land with zoning. So. When you say engineering, that's saying that the road has been engineered, the stormwater has been engineered, and that's why.
That's the. At a schematic level right now.
Correct. It's schematic.
It's. Engineered insofar as the right of way is the right width, the cul-de-sac is the correct diameter. It's meeting those basic departments of the block.
And that's where. Basically with this preliminary subdivision filing, you have forty-five days to render a decision. I'm not entirely sure if it would be constructively approved at that point. But, um. The other thing too with this is because it's a preliminary plan filing and it's really just a schematic. Look, there's no real approval criteria for this. That's where this is like, it's very, very.
So.
Confusing, especially when associated with this application.
So, so for me, I don't think a cul-de-sac belongs there.
Okay.
Okay. So. It, so it's either think of it that way. Or send it to town council and come back. Or you can. It's, those are three options.
I think we.
I think we. I think it's effectively an.
I think our option is to, um.
Exactly.
Why are you waiting to get an opinion from town council?
Because we're not. Yeah, okay. Yep. All right. The, the board.
No, no, I'm just.
No, no, I, I hear what you're saying.
Do we want to have a date that we want to talk about or do the motion?
No, I, I think we need to critically look at it.
You've got somebody else with a hand up on those screens.
Yeah. Casey's on.
Okay. All right, give me one second.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Case.
Uh, I was just under the impression that if something was approved before the vote at the town meeting earlier this month. It was grandfathered in with the zoning, so I'm not sure why this would even be needed. I guess that's where my confusion is.
Belt and suspenders. They want to make sure that this, they've, they've done this a number of different ways. They did it through an A and R. And now they're doing this. And the question of whether or not they needed to do either of those things. Who knows? But it's just belt and suspenders, I suspect. They want to preserve their investment.
If you had, um. Two meetings ago when this warrant came out. Uh, we applauded Mr. DeGuey for the, um. The idea of restricting future warehouses. I said it at that meeting and I said it at the town meeting. Whenever I spoke, voice my personal opinion. I thought this warrant article should have been vetted. More properly. To find out what the ramifications are. What is happening tonight in front of us. Is part of that ramification process. The townsfolk. We obviously listened and the town has heard. As you indicated earlier. They were approved. Prior to the town voting on this. And that right does not change. However. They're looking long term and protecting their investment with the options they've taken. Since that, um. Warehouse was approved. And I hope that answers your questions and I, I thank you. Um, excuse me, I'll, I'll be at my phone. I just want to look at a calendar. So April eighteenth was the date of the submission. Right. So we need to, uh, have a re. Forty-five days. We have to have an answer. Correct?
Correct.
So that brings us to when? I think we're looking at. Next meeting? Second, I think we thought. Okay. I'm not, I'm not a math freak.
Not, neither am I. I've got the secret weapon.
I, I have, I have an actual, it's a wife. I just want to make sure we comply with the devil.
Yeah.
I think we're getting pretty close to that date.
We are.
If not that date. You know, just try to keep my phone.
Higher than that's. Sunday, June second.
Which, yeah. Which likely means it's bills, but.
So it has to be there and actually.
So I'll move to continue the public hearing. Our. Second.
Yeah, maybe twenty-third. So. Just. Before you. You continue it. You want town council's opinion on ramifications of both.
Sure. For positive and negative. Is there a difference?
We got it.
Um.
If we could give any assistance, trouble.
Do we need a decision deadline on this?
Well, the decision deadline is the forty-five days.
Okay.
Okay.
Do you have a discussion? Call for the vote?
And aside.
Right.
Go on.
Go on.
I'm marching passes in the nation. Gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you mind if I?
Thank you.
Yeah.
For a rejection by minutes.
Technical concern, Rob?
Yeah.
What I'd like to do is, um. Approve the minutes from our last meeting. We all had a chance to review those minutes.
Yep, I, I just had one correction on page thirty.
Yep.
Um, halfway there. Mr. Solferi made a motion to close the public hearing. Um, then maybe the.
Okay.
Oh, it, I'm sorry, on page four. Top of the page says, Mr. Solferi made a motion to endorse the public hearing. But I think they endorsed the A and R.
Okay. That's credible.
I'll move to approve the minutes as mentioned.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have that one, please?
Yep.
Very much on the board or three minutes from our last second meeting in April.
Oh.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
That aside.
Right.
Go on.
Go on.
Motion passage in this one. Um. Are you all set? Do you want me to go to fifty-two, one fifty-two D plus three?
Yeah, why don't you do one fifty-two Depot Street while we still have Zoom up? Cause I think, um. I believe one of the concerned butters is here for that. Um. If I'm not mistaken, the one fifty-two Depot Street concern is regarding lights.
That's correct.
So.
We're going to complain for a resident?
Correct, so.
We're addressing that?
So with that, though, with one fifty-two Depot Street. I believe that the power actually just got turned on with that building. And that's where I guess some of the light fixtures on the backside of the building. Were causing some pretty significant light glare because when the electricity was turned on, so, um. Tim Icardi, building inspector, went out there and talked to the owner. So. He's going to get the, the shielding on there or replace the lights to make sure that they're the correct downlit lights. On the building. Cause right now it's just shooting out, not down. And we required, that was part of the photometrics plan. That required no glare, um.
So then why don't we, uh. Just table this discussion for the next meeting. Hopefully it's all set. And, and we can just make sure it's done.
Correct. I think Casey is on. I don't know Casey if he wanted to, if it might.
Casey, are you there?
Yeah.
We have to unmute.
Hi. I am here. Um. Yeah, at the. Driveway, the parking lot lights on my side of the warehouse have been turned off for the last week, which has been very nice. Um, but prior to that, it was essentially a spotlight coming into my back door. Into my entire kitchen and dining room. And as they're on. All night. It was pretty bright and pretty distracting. So, uh, yeah, if they could put something on there to fix that, I would love that.
I'm lucky you had several options that was outlined by Rod. Can I repeat those?
Yeah, well, where we are not, the town is not looking at options. They're telling the developer or the, the property owner that they need to abide by those. The photometrics plan and making sure that it's down lighting, not. Cast out because we, you know.
Well, I think. That might be part of the problem is it is going down. Um. Where my third floor, which is where I'm sitting right now, is about level with the lights. My fir- second floor, my main floor where the dining room is. Uh, is lower. So the lights are higher than the. Uh, berm that they created for the noise. And they're higher than the trees that they put on the berm. So the lights are going down. They're just going down over everything.
That's where the shielding will, uh, will want to come into play for the, for those lights to make sure that they don't cast over the, the berm. There are, there's ways to, to, to. Basically either retrofit or replace the lights with that shielding. So. What I can do is Casey, if it makes sense, once I hear from Tim, when they have those new fixtures in, you know, we can basically coordinate with you to make sure that. The shielding did indeed work with that light going. Not being cast over the berm, if that makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, so I think that that, that's the best course of action.
Wait, look, you're doing.
I had, I had another concern on that.
Yeah.
The berm would. If I'm thinking of the right berm that I drove by recently.
Sure.
There's a few small little shrubs on it. I don't know. Help something better than.
I'm sure those are intended to grow. It'll just be a matter of if they survive long enough.
Yeah, maybe if we can take a look at the plan.
Yeah, I can.
To see if there's something, what, what was called out there.
Yeah, I can look into it.
Yeah.
Um, point on that, that's the noise barrier. And when they submitted those final plans, they hadn't finalized what that would be yet. So it might not be on the plans. Or at least the ones that were available prior to the decision.
Yeah, I can look into it. Casey to figure that and the board, so. Cause I.
There was, there was, they were, they look like shrubs.
Yeah, and I think they still have a window with some of the X carrier stuff on there. I have to talk to Tim.
Yeah.
Starting on this past Monday. I'm still getting up to speed with. A lot of stuff, so.
So why, why don't we just put this on the agenda for next? Here to see how this ends.
Yeah, we can give you a, we can give an update on that. And since they shut the lights off there, I mean, it might not be fixed by next meeting, but we keep the recurring update with that.
Yeah, I think we keep it rotating.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Casey.
Thank you for bringing to our attention.
Oh yeah, there was no way I wasn't doing that.
I didn't expect, expect. Thank you. Next item is a continued public hearing on Prospect Village.
Whoa, you're up. Which one are you? Yeah, so he actually just requested a continuance to.
Yeah.
June. Six.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Well.
Yeah.
Hold on, on. Okay, you requested a continuance to June sixth.
So, so just, just. So I can say before you open the hearing, I mean, we just got comments from the peer reviewer today.
Excuse me? We have a meeting going on.
So we just got the peer reviews comments today. And so there's really nothing for us to present.
Okay.
And so I suggested to Rob, now that he's on board, it's a good. Good idea, have a plan. Um. I suggested that we. Uh, that we. Continue the meeting so that we can respond properly to all the comments that were made.
Okay.
Definitely. So I've asked for continuation since June sixth. With the provision that we go ahead of the Maple Street people.
On version one?
The Maple Street. The people who are here tonight, they're on that same night.
And you like to be first? I'll be here just joking.
Try, do two of them.
Yeah.
I'm going to have three hours.
I understand.
Rob, what do we have in writing as far as? We need a specific design, right?
For the continuance? Yeah, I just, I got it.
You got it already?
Yeah.
He's so, he's so cynical.
Oh, we just know, we, we worked together for years.
I only think you can make sense of the decision.
To the public, he has asked for a continuation, uh, to our June sixth meeting. Um. How many people are here for, um. Prospect Hill Village? Okay. I unfortunately, it'll be continued. To June sixth. I, I thank you for coming. I did not foresee this happening, but thank you for your participation. Please keep coming. And you're welcome to stay for anything else.
Just a question slash comment. He's mentioned that he just got the comments back from peer review and he intends to, to use the time between now and June sixth to address them. But could you also please ask him to address the access through Franklin issue? I raised this question in January, in March. They haven't heard anything.
Will you, will you address them the sixth? You're, you're, you'll be addressing the sixth.
Yeah, we just. It's not a hearing, so.
Yeah.
We can move on and so.
Any kind of motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
That's I.
So I.
Thank you all for coming.
So. Let's see. So there's also. We have the A and R for Blackstone. Which is. Yep, that's Lou again. So. I believe, do you want me to give the update?
Please.
All right. So I believe you've discussed this. Great lengths previously. I think you wanted to continue this just to get. Me on board and legal counsel as well.
That's correct.
So we did get legal input, which. I have a copy of it if you want it, but.
Yes.
Yeah, um, basically. The big question becomes. Site access, which. It's not improved access. I know Lou has mentioned it in a public hearing that, uh. Truck could probably get through it, but for the intensive purposes of public safety, passenger vehicle. I do not believe that that is considered. I do not believe that that is considered access, and furthermore. In our definitions for a street and zoning bylaws, there's three criteria. And I don't believe that this meets I, any of them. In particular. Basically, the the way that the street definition is met, you got a public way or way which the town clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public way. Which this is not. That's A, B, a way shown on a plan approved in accordance with the subdivision control laws, which it is not. And C, a way in existence when the subdivision control became effective in Ballingham, having in the opinion of the planning board. Sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use. Of the land abutting thereon or served thereby for the installation of municipal services to serve such land in building erected or to be erected thereon. So basically with the sufficient width, suitable grades and adequate construction, I do not believe that that meets that criteria. So, I, well, the board has basically a couple options for this. For the A and R, you can sign it, which means that you're going to endorse it, basically say that, you know, you do believe there is access. That's option one, option two is you can not take any. Motion on this, and basically it would just be constructively approved. And I think it's twenty one days, whatever the extension deadline is, but that's that option, and then. That would basically be kicked back to the building department, him, and if Lou decided to pull a building permit. He would have to go through the adequate access with zoning once again, so. What I would recommend is don't sign the A and R and actually take a vote to definitively say that you do not endorse the A and R plan. That's my suggestion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
I like to hear from you.
Yes, so, as you may recall, I never asked you, the board, to approve the or endorse the plan. I asked the board to make a determination. Based on the information that I've provided. That this was a way in existence on the ground prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law. Okay?
Yeah.
That's the first decision. If the answer to that question is yes, that it was or is, then we determine. Then it, by right, it's an approval not required plan, it's an A and R plan, not the subdivision plan. And the determination then is, how do you construct the way? That would make the lots entitled to endorsement. So. Rob is, he's correct about the, what you have in your. Regulation, it's state law, it's in the statute. But the statute is pretty clear, this is a two-point process. Was the way in existence prior to the adoption of the subdivision control law, we know that it was. For the record. Now, if the board doesn't make that determination, you force me to go to court. Get a judge to give me a declaration that says it was a way in existence, then I'll be back here again, say. Okay, either we work together to construct a way to town standards and apply. Your subdivision regulations as closely as possible, or we go and. Paint the road our ourselves, and then I'll come back for an endorsement, in which case it will have adequate access. So, I've said from the beginning. Make the determination that it was a way in existence right on nineteen fifty five. And let us come back to the board. With a plan and profile and construction standards that meets your regulations. With the A and R plan, so that instead of the A and R plan being one sheet, it would be maybe three sheets, those are the plan sheet. And then it's the land and profile sheet with. Covenant of some sort that we wouldn't build on any of the lots, so. The roadway was completely similar to your, in a subdivision. Process, and that, that's really what this is all about, it's it's not, nothing to, I mean, I appreciate you going to get this, but. He's basically not saying that I haven't. He's saying that I haven't submitted enough information to determine whether or not it was a way in existence. But if I go in front of a judge, show him these photographs and these things, I know what the answer's gonna be. You, we're wasting each other's time and money if we do that, and in which case, you know, we've already, my X carrier is out there now, I'm ready to s- do something. Okay, so. I wanna work with the planning board to try and make this. Go properly, not looking for an endorsement tonight, or I haven't from day one. Make the decision that it's a way in existence, then we'll figure out. What needs to be done in order for the board to have. The construction standards satisfactory to your subdivision regulations. And then approve it together.
Okay.
That's all, so, I'm not. Let's prove it, disapprove it.
I understand. Anyone in the public have any comments? Anyone here have any comments?
Or a question, I I don't even know what property we're talking about here, it's just the same as the.
You want a property? Rob, well.
You go ahead, well, it's.
It's a parcel of land that.
Parcels of where, correct?
Parcels, several parcels, it's two hundred some odd acres of land. We're building single-family houses with it, warehouses that's accessory buildings.
It is the area of North Street and Blackstone Street?
It's between uh, North Street and the town line. Of Blackstone.
It is not. What we previously discussed on Prospect, it's a separate entity, entire entity.
That's really the uh, the gist of with, you know, where we're at, so, it's uh. I'm trying to choose the path of, you know.
I I understand.
I mean, that's why I've extended it out this time because I want.
I appreciate that.
Little smoother process, so. If you wanna look at the photographs again, I mean.
I I saw them today.
Not only that, but I mean, the town actually knew it was a public way, so they abandoned it as a public way. So. I don't wanna go in front of a judge and have.
I I understand what we have. We put it from our town planner, which I was ready for, and from our town council, so I I would entertain a motion.
To do what?
Way in existence.
Well. I think that the decision that we're required to render is. Is whether or not this property has access. The applicant is. Concedes that it doesn't have access. Therefore, the decision is that, I think. We have to, the required decision is to deny. The A and R.
Okay, so you motion?
And it was, it was because of, I mean. Insufficient width. In insufficient grades to cut me. Right, or at any time. But that, that was the discussion we had the last time.
Correct.
That that was agreed.
Well, I'm not, I'm.
I know you're trying to do something else.
No, I'm not trying to do anything, I'm trying to follow the procedures that's in the subdivision control law, I mean, I'm not making this up. Black and white, it's law, it's the state law, so. Either, either if you acknowledge the fact, number one, that was the way in existence before nineteen fifty five. The simple answer, yes or no?
You've indicated that it is, our town council has indicated that we need additional information. Our planner has said he did not meet the criteria.
For the A and R.
For the A and R.
Which is a little different.
Which is a little different.
Yeah.
So what, so let's go back to your town council.
And and hold on, sir, technically, we have a motion on the floor, right?
I didn't make a motion.
Okay, go ahead, so.
I mean, let's, let's go back to your town council, because I know Amy have, you know. But what additional information do you need? To substantiate the fact that this was a way in existence in nineteen fifty five? That's the first question.
That's not a question we have to reach, the question we have.
That's what she's saying, she's saying that it presents. Enough information to warrant the decision by the board that it was a way in existence.
But we don't need to reach that question, we just need to ascertain whether or not there's adequate access to this parcel.
I disagree. The case law is pretty clear.
I understand.
So. Oh, it was, I don't wanna come here at ten o'clock at night and have this, this, this is the third time I've been here, it's like to discuss this. It's just, so, I'll just go, I'll just go to the judge and get in the, give me the decision, then I'll be back here and we're gonna be in the same spot, I'm gonna say, okay. Um, it's an A and R plan, what do you wanna do with the road, how do you wanna build it? That's his question, how do you wanna build this road?
Did that start our decision to see?
No, it isn't, I know, that's what I'm saying.
I anticipate. That this is where we would end up.
I mean, you've had this, you've had this legal opinion since. February.
I understand.
And now you're giving it to me, I would have already been in front of a judge, and I've already would have had this done in summary judgment like, like that.
Sir, you're, sir.
So you've held me up.
You're probably correct.
You've, you've, you've slow walked it. Took advantage of my good nature. And. Now I'm three months down the line.
I don't, I wouldn't characterize the proceedings like that.
You have, you've had this opinion since February.
I physically saw it for the first time today. So.
I don't know what's going on, but I mean, these kinds of things, really, kind of, if you're trying to work together, you don't.
And and just a point. We wanted additional information. I engaged here at the last meeting that we had, um. What we thought was an offer out to a town planner that had been accepted, and I wanted him to give us opinion, since he'll be the town planner when this goes into effect. And that is the reason, well, one of the personal reasons why we continued it to tonight.
That, I I understand, but. Just to put things in perspective, this is, this is not really their way to operate. People accuse me of being a bait and switch and all this other stuff, well, let me just tell you, that's not really very. Not a good way to do business, you have a legal opinion. If you said to me in February, we want more information, I would have gone and gotten you a, a, an aerial photograph of nineteen fifty five, and I would have brought it in and said, here's the way.
But it didn't mean it was approved.
No, but it would mean. It would mean that you'd have to make the determination that it's a way in existence, I don't, I don't know if you guys understand the difference. If it's a way in existence, then it's not a subdivision by definition, follow? Okay. That's what, we, I'm not filing a subdivision plan here.
Yeah.
It's gonna be an A and R plan. And it's gonna be an A and R plan.
Okay.
I I'm really disappointed, I mean. And I'm the one who gets accused of being the guy who's like. You know, being a shady guy, not, not very good. Whatever you wanna do, I'll go in front of the judge, I'll get it done my way. And you can spend your town council's money and time doing it. So they're not cheap.
We're not done. Okay. So, just for the record, the applicant has walked out, the hearing's not over. And, yeah, and I take exceptions to the characterization that he has put forth regarding the proceedings generally. But at the end of the day, the required decision that we must reach is whether or not there's adequate access. The applicant. Tonight and meetings before has conceded that he's not challenging that it doesn't have adequate access. So I, to me, our decision is pretty clear.
Okay.
So I moved to. Uh, not endorse the approval of the fire.
With sufficient.
We don't need to make any other determination.
No.
We're just not endorsing.
You want to.
Due to the inadequate access.
Okay. Were any sufficient, any insufficient reaction?
Yeah.
That's what I was thinking. This little piece up here.
Yeah.
That's your role, that that doesn't change what.
I know, it's, the analysis is that, is there sufficient? Is there adequate access to this parcel? Right? Correct, the answer is no. By everyone's account, including the applicants. There you go. Denying the A and R based on.
The adequate.
The lack, the lack of adequate access, yeah, so. That is.
Any other discussion? Paul for vote?
Somebody has a second.
Return?
I don't think that's second.
Yeah, I think he's second, right?
I'll second. And it's I.
Right, I.
Go on.
This is two to none.
So they're right on it. Yes, although we're voting yes. We're voting on it, they're not.
Now, Rob, do we have to?
The motion passed, you know.
We have to render a written decision in court? I believe that that is the case. And what does that do? And has to be at clerk's office? I agree. Alright. And to provide that decision.
What's that?
Excuse me? I said I would recommend the board wait until the last minute to render that decision.
We will.
Alright.
I'm.
All within laws.
I think that wraps up our agenda for you. I was missing something.
That's all I have.
Uh, Bungay Brooks Solar Lights?
Oh, yeah, I don't know if anybody is on for that.
Anyone here?
Anybody on Zoom for uh, Bungay? Brooks Solar Lights discussion?
I would entertain a motion for.
Do we need to talk about that now? Honestly, I am not up to date on it at all, so. So we'll do it next meeting.
Continue to the next meeting, it's in general business, huh?
Okay. Very good.
Before we adjourn, I wanna thank all the people here. Who're staying here, all the people in the audience who're staying here. It's been a very long and confusing evening.
Thanks to adjourn.
Do I have a second on adjourn? All in favor?
That's I.
Right, I.
Go on.
Go on.
We are adjourned.
And we need to be.
Certainly an interesting evening.
Job, guys, a spankless job, you know, I appreciate what you do.